Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 17th, 2012 Board of Commissioners in Currituck County. It gives the holiday here tonight. We have a short agenda, so I hope we can make this expeditious. And we'll start off tonight with the invitation, let's believe. We have time for this, for the night, if you don't want to come out of that theater. If you could sit down, it would be welcome. There's an invitation, and we're playing.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we give you so much thanks for this opportunity for the gathering of our government, and we pray that your Holy Spirit will be upon each and every one who is a part of this. We ask for your insight and your wisdom as we make decisions. For this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Next is approval of the agenda. We have two amendments to the agenda. We want to add, under Public Hearings Item B, Mr. Chris Turner, Wildlife Resources Commission, is here to do a presentation on coyotes. And then, under the consent agenda, there's a surplus equipment resolution for the Information Technology Department.
Move for approval with the amendments. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we have public comment period. This is a period where anybody can address the Board of Commissioners regarding any items of concern or interest to them. I don't have anybody signed up for that public comment period yet. If there's anyone here that would like to speak but did not sign up, if you'll let me know, we'd be glad to entertain whatever you have to say. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Public hearings, first item. A public hearing action, PB 12-15, Bissell Professional Group, request amend the new Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Section 4.2.5, industrial uses to allow expansion of existing mining operations. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment to the new UDO, which is under a dual-use period now and will be effective January 1st. This amendment was submitted by Bissell Professional Group on behalf of a mining operation here in Currituck County. And I'll be brief. Real quickly, Currituck County has a maximum excavation area of 30% of the site for our commercial mines. And we allow commercial mines in the agricultural zoning district and the two industrial zoning districts. What this request does is this allows for the expansion of our existing mine sites. And it's set up in a way where a mine can be expanded up to 40% of the total site area through administrative approval, so that's by the technical review committee or the planning staff. And then, a mine can be expanded to an additional area of 50% by approval of the Board of Commissioners. So, there's a couple of standards for how that occurs. So, they come in, a mine comes in, gets a use permit to establish a commercial mine. If that's approved, they can excavate up to 30% of the total site area. If that permit remains active, the mine's been in operation for a period of five years, and the mine during those five years has maintained compliance with state and local regulations, they are then eligible to come into the Board of Commissioners and request additional excavation area. And like I said, they can go up to 40% with staff approval or up to 50% with board approval. So what this does, it allows our existing mines, after showing that they have operated in accordance with the rules and regulations, to be eligible for an expansion, almost in a sense rewarding the mines that operate well. Planning Board did hear this request at their September, excuse me, their August meeting. They did recommend approval. Staff also recommends approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
One, if I could. Why do we limit? Why don't we start at 40%? Why is there a limit of 30%?
I'm not sure that I know the answer to that. Anecdotally, my understanding is that many, many years ago, there were probably more than, I understand, more than 50 active commercial mines in Currituck County, and there was some concern with just overall excavation throughout the county. So, a Board of Commissioners then established these standards, and it's remained at 30% for a very long time.
Has there been any hardship as far as people coming forward and being denied the other 10% up to 40%?
Well, to this point, we haven't allowed that. So even the staff allowance up to 40% is a new thing for Currituck County.
Statewide, what would be the norm?
The norm statewide, again, to the best of my knowledge, is that most localities probably follow state requirements, which don't have an excavation percentage but just establish setbacks and allow you to excavate within the setbacks, which would probably be a lot more area than, say, 40 or 50%.
Okay.
That addressed my question, too, as well. I was wondering, why was it a percentage area as opposed to a setback, which would, of course, be the factor that affected a neighboring property?
I don't know the original reason for that, but I will note, the reason we chose working with Bissell, 50%, that actually matches the open space requirement for conservation subdivision. So, part of the area of having a percentage is you can allow mine sites to be reclaimed and then possibly be used for a neighborhood or a subdivision or some other use, because there is some uplands that remain. So I think that's the context of why we have a percentage in Currituck.
Any other questions? Mr. Woody?
One brief question, Mr. Chairman. Why don't our permits run concurrent with the state? In other words, I know of a mine in Lower Currituck that they've gone back through the state, got all their permits, they're willing to operate under the county permit, but they have to come back and go through the whole special use permit again when they're going to operate within the parameters that they operated before, state's already signed off. But, Currituck, we require them to come back and do the special use permit and all the paraphernalia. Again, why can't, if the state signs off, I think they certainly are a higher authority than the county, why can't our staff sign off on the same standards or the county standards?
You could allow that. Again, I don't know the answer, but we have what Mr. O'Neill's referring to, we have a 10-year expiration on a use permit. So every 10 years, the mine operators have to come back to this Board of Commissioners to get kind of a reapproval, a recertification of the mine. If you wanted to alter that, you could allow that to be an approval at the staff level that basically says if the mine's operating in accordance with procedures and maintains permits, then the staff could approve that. That's an option.
Could you add it to this?
You could.
And make it concurrent with state permit, as long as the state permit was in existence?
Yeah, if they qualify for the state, and then if they qualify for our standards, then he could just reissue the permit.
You could.
As long as it's operating in standards that are acceptable. And if it's not, you always have the revocation.
That's correct.
Avenue. It just would make it, you know, we're talking about the UDO making things easier. This would certainly make things easier for all.
They should try it together.
And it wouldn't be a new mine. I'm not talking about a new mine. I'm talking about some of these older ones instead of having to come back.
Streamlining.
Yeah. So could we add that to this tonight?
We could, if you just include that in your motion to incorporate that change, and we'll add it.
Okay.
No more questions for Mr. Woody?
One more question. How does this affect the provision in the current ordinance that allowed them to fill an acre to dig another acre?
We still have that allowance in here. You still can reclaim portions of your mine to maintain that 30%, which now will be 40 or 50. So you could still do that as well.
So it would allow for, if they could get the backfill to go in there, they could actually get more than 50%?
Yes, sir. That's right.
If there's no more questions from Mr. Woody, then I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add to this?
Good evening. Dave Clubbitts with Bissell Professional Group. I really don't have much more to add, I think, than Woody did a good job explaining everything. And he touched on all the key points. He related back to the new conservation subdivision provisions and the 50% requirement there. So I really don't have much more to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Clubbitts. Hearing none?
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address this at public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for approval of the ordinance as written with any staff recommendations, and also to make expiring permits that are concurrent with the state, allowing staff to sign off on those to continue unless there's violations. If there's violations, then it would have to come back to the Board.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Mr. Turner, Wildlife Resources Commission.
Good evening.
Let me address one thing before we get started. I understand you have a lot of slides.
Well, we're going to clean that up a little bit and cut to the chase.
Okay, because normally, we limit our staff to 13 slides.
Okay.
Some of them get over.
Can I have somebody's slides?
But we'll give you whatever time, just as you said, just be expeditious, because I think we're all probably pretty much aware of the situation, but we just wanted to get your take on it.
Okay. I'll be glad to do that.
Mr. Turner.
I'll do my best. Again, I'm Chris Turner. I'm the District 1 Wildlife Biologist for the Wildlife Resources Commission, Division of Wildlife Management, at the request of this Board. I appreciate the opportunity to come and give a little bit of information about coyotes. Here over the last several years, certainly, they have begun to be noticed a lot more in a lot of situations. And I kind of wanted to give some general background information on coyotes, because I know there are a lot of questions about where all this started. And I also wanted to kind of cut through some of the slides and get down to some of the tools in the toolbox, so to speak, as far as managing the coyote population and managing individual situations. So, our fur bear biologist is Colleen Offenbuttl. She could not be here this evening, but I do want to express my appreciation for her for putting all this information together. She has compiled a lot of information, so I want to get on with that. The first few slides are basically just some background on the original status of coyotes. You can see, prior to European settlement, we had coyotes in the center of this continent. But you can see, obviously, that currently, we have coyotes over a great deal of North America. That is primarily because of changes in the landscape over time. Certainly, coyotes can coexist with people very well, and some of the changes that we've seen in the land have basically made things good for an adaptable animal like the coyote. You can kind of see, basically, we've seen expansion countrywide, beginning in Louisiana in the 1940s. Basically, once they got east of the Mississippi, they started to merge populations to the point that we wound up with coyote reports as early as the 1930s in western North Carolina. Back in the 80s was where the bulk of the expansion took place in North Carolina. You can kind of run through these kind of quick. I just want to show you how it's changed since 1983.
Hmm.
I think that speaks for itself. Basically, within 30 years, we've seen expansion to all 100 counties in North Carolina, with Currituck County first having sightings back in around 2003. So we've known about coyotes in Currituck and surrounding counties for, you know, almost 10 years. But, yeah, I don't know if that coincides with what you have seen in your personal experience, but some of the changes that I've seen, the map matches real well. Basically, once coyotes were established, you can see that we started to have a harvest of coyotes. The left-hand side is harvested by trapping, that's the blue line. The harvest by hunting are the red bars. And they don't reflect the same numbers, but they reflect the same trend, basically an increase in trend as we had expansion. You can, if you can go back for a second. Basically, on the coast, in 2010 and 11, we had over 1,600 trapped, over half of the state total that were harvested by hunting were taken on the coast as well. You'll see that Currituck County ranked 87th out of 100 states as far as the harvest from trapping. That is certainly something that, when you start to look at the total harvest, it corresponds not just with numbers of coyotes, but it also corresponds with effort. So the changes that you see in the harvest aren't just more coyotes, they're a combination of more coyotes and more effort towards harvesting coyotes.
Okay.
Coyotes are extremely adaptable, meaning they can handle various habitat types, which is why we've had such expansion.
Okay.
Basically, food habits have made, or something that they're also adaptable with, being omnivorous. They can eat almost anything. They're not just predators, you know, dealing with small mammals and birds and things like that. They also eat vegetables, also eat fruits in the forest. We've actually had some watermelon depredation in a couple of places this summer that I've heard about, and that's not unheard of. Basically, they are adaptable as far as their behavior as well. They have learned tolerance to people. You can go ahead. And I think any time you start to have coyotes living near people, sometimes the behavior of people is something that's also adaptable. When you start to get people that feed things intentionally or accidentally, you start to have a greater, basically, greater opportunity for coexisting and for seeing things and for dealing with things. Basically, as far as, they're very adaptable. So far as mortality, you can just roll through this. Basically, the harder we push the population, the better they are at offsetting that loss. The more resources are available in a heavily harvested population, basically, the more resources are available for what's left, and they correspond that with greater reproduction. So that kind of creates some tough issues as far as managing numbers. Eradication is something I've heard a lot of people talk about, but basically, it's not possible, simply because you would have to remove 70% of the standing population each year in order to push them down to the point that they're in trouble, so to speak. You can go on. One of the things that we see as an issue with coyotes is their ability to use a large area. Home ranges typically vary between 1,000 acres and 16,000 acres. That's a lot of square miles for a coyote or a pair of coyotes to utilize. Basically, when you tie that in with dispersal, meaning subadult coyotes, that when they get old enough, they leave where they were born and they seek their own home range. You see a dispersal here from up in Terrell County that wound up up there around Greensboro. So you've got an animal that can cover a lot of ground in dispersal. You can go. This is a study from Fort Bragg. You can see a dispersing subadult that wound up in Anderson, South Carolina, from Fort Bragg. You can go to the next one. This is one that wound up in Northern Virginia from Fort Bragg. You can go to the next one. Basically, when you start to tie in the adaptability of coyotes, as well as the amount of area that they can cover in dispersal, you really start to see that they can be quite a thing to get a handle on. Basically, wildlife interactions, we think that they're minimal at this point. Some of the smaller predators are basically predated by coyotes, which results in probably helping some species like birds. Other species, like red foxes, are probably negatively impacted because coyotes and red foxes compete directly. We would probably expect to see a decline in number of red foxes where you have established coyote populations. I think one of the, probably one of the reasons that there were some questions here tonight is some of the issues that arise with people in subdivision-type areas. Basically, conflicts are typically associated with food, with free food. And certainly, when you tie coyotes and pets together, that may not come out very well either. It results in a lot of concern from homeowners. But certainly, it typically comes down to a food resource issue is where the prevention comes in. You can always bet that coyotes will be where the food is, and that's typically where you seem acclimated to people, which is where a lot of issues begin. Go ahead. Certainly, I think one of the health issues that comes up is concern about rabid coyotes. Any mammal can get rabies, and certainly, coyotes have popped up on the list as one that potentially shows the ability to have rabies. So it's just one more species that everybody kind of has to watch and wants to respond to. But you can also see that it's a very small percentage of the number of animals that are submitted for rabies testing. Okay? Basically, the tools that we have in dealing with coyote populations, we manage populations with trapping and with hunting. Regular trapping season allows trapping of coyotes. Depredation permits can be issued outside of the trapping season in issues where there's damage, property damage in particular. Any poultry or livestock owners that request a depredation permit for coyotes would be granted a permit for coyotes. Hunting is now year-round, using electronic calling devices. Back on August 1st, we had some temporary rules put in place that would allow hunting of coyotes at night with a light. So I think with that step, I think we pretty much have opened up the hunting of coyotes pretty much wide open. We've had year-round hunting. The only time you couldn't hunt coyotes with a firearm was on Sundays, because there's no Sunday hunting with firearms. But once you can start shooting them at night with a light, I think you have maxed out the opportunity for those people who want to harvest coyotes during a coyote season, which is year-round. You can go ahead. Basically, when you, you can go to the next one. Basically, the coyote issues that I typically hear about, a lot of it is dealing with concern as far as people seeing one for the first time, or seeing one in their yard, or seeing one across the road near their house. Basically, the non-lethal approach is the key, prevention, basically using education, helping people to understand that we do have coyotes, and we really have to take proactive steps to make sure that we don't have a problem at our house. Typically, with pet food, becomes a big issue. Fencing is always something that people can use to protect livestock and things like that. You can go to the next one. Non-lethal techniques are cost-effective and efficient, and I think one of the keys is that once people are aware that they may be feeding wildlife by feeding pets outside, I think it basically opens the door for reducing a lot of other wildlife problems as well that are food-generated. Lethal techniques are possible. They're not possible where local ordinances prevent the discharge of a firearm. They're typically used in rural areas. But basically, with trapping and the use of firearms are two of the ways that we deal with specific problem situations. Go ahead. Depredation permits can be issued. Wildlife Damage Control Agents, which are basically private individuals who you can get to on our website, the county list, they can issue depredation permits and do the work for people as is necessary. Wildlife Commission employees, field staff can also issue depredation permits where it's necessary, allows trapping outside the trapping season, but it hinges on damage. Go to the next one. Far as sources of help, I assist wherever I can in providing technical guidance. Our website does an excellent job at providing resources for people to understand the problem and to have some steps to deal with it. I passed out the Coexisting with Coyotes publication prior to starting this meeting. That's one good example of a handout that becomes very useful in helping people understand that we now have coyotes, and there are certainly some things that we can do to prevent a problem, not just stop it. You can go to the next one. Basically, the tools in the toolbox are right there. We manage a population with hunting and trapping. We work to prevent problems, not just stop them, but basically, small-scale removal of individual problem animals. All coyotes aren't a problem necessarily. You have individuals that can become an issue, and there are certainly ways of dealing with individual animals as a way of stopping a problem once it begins. But the key's prevention. We also have a list of licensed trappers who can actually do work for people. Basically, there's a contact list where if somebody wants somebody to trap for them within the regular trapping season, then there's a way of making contact with those people. Okay, you can go to the next one. We have four Damage Control Agents in Currituck County at this time. Four signed up, trapping assistant people on that website as well. I think the, once you get on the website and you look under "have a problem," you can start to explore opportunities to reduce problems and prevent problems. Okay? One last thing that I wanted to mention is that if you go onto our website, we, as an agency, just completed a fox and coyote study as mandated by the legislature, and you can also get a copy of that. It gets into a lot of detail regarding populations and regarding options and regarding the direction that we're currently headed as an agency in dealing with coyotes. It's a really good step towards understanding the reality of the situation. So I certainly would request that you take a look at that, and I can help you get your hands on that as well, if you would like to do that. You can go to the next one. Again, I'm Chris Turner, and I'm able to be called at any time. My number's right there. If you have anything further that you would like to discuss, or you have issues that come up, specific issues, I'm there to assist people in understanding their options and helping to move things forward as far as preventing problems and helping people to deal with problems once they begin. So that's pretty much all I had. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Christian.
You've got people trapping. Is there a market for the pelts? I mean, what's the incentive to trap?
Well, there's typically two ways that those coyotes are used as far as income. There is a fur market still. It varies, the price of pelts varies, you know, on an annual basis. As far as, probably the bulk of the incentive at this time is the trapping of live animals that are basically allowed to be bought and sold to licensed fox preserves as a means of using live coyotes. So that is probably where a lot of the interest lies. You know, most of the animals that are taken by hunting are typically taken by deer hunters, incidental to deer hunting. I think with the change in the coyote night law, I think we may see a little bit more incentive as far as people's interest in actually hunting coyotes.
As a side note, my daughter lives in Scottsdale, Arizona, and it's not uncommon to hear coyotes howling. And I notice here that, you know, if we have such a large population of coyotes, I've yet to hear one howl. But do they howl like the ones out west? I mean, that's a silly question to do.
Yes, sir. You can periodically hear them. I think one thing that's interesting is that coyotes use a really big area. You know, they use what's available. A lot of times, what you hear from howling animals is family groups. It might sound like 20 or 30 coyotes. Typically, if it's a family group, you're looking at two adults, a subadult, and, you know, five or six kits, coyote cubs. So that's basically, you know, what you would hear, and you periodically hear them. A lot of times, it's when they're in one location, centered around a den area. A lot of times it's when they're, they're in one location centered around a den area, when they, they're not using a very big area, because they got pups to take care of within a smaller area. I think that's where a lot of the nuisance calls that I hear about, uh, probably stem from a near, a den that's nearby, uh, you know, to a subdivision or to a home, and people are hearing them, and they're actually seeing them, you know, coming and loafing in their yard. They're really not doing anything to speak of, but they got to be somewhere, and sometimes they wind up in, in somebody's yard repeatedly. And I think that's, a lot of the calls are generated that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman, okay, coyotes prey, they'll eat the small animals, but they also will eat a cat?
Yes, sir.
A small dog?
Yes, sir, they could certainly do that.
Will they eat a deer? Will they attack a deer?
Well, mo- most of the, the discussions that we're having right now center around fawns. Uh, basically, there's one portion of the year when you have, uh, have fawns small enough that a coyote could find them, and have a chance to take them. Uh, there's some research going on in, in some other states as well, uh, centered around that, but I, to, to take a, a healthy adult deer, I think that's, that's, uh, probably doesn't happen as often as some people probably think it does. Uh, some of the studies have been, uh, scat studies, where they basically, uh, look at what the coyote's been eating through their, through their scat, through their droppings, and you'll find deer hair in those scats during certain times of the year. The issue becomes being able to say whether the coyote took that animal, or whether that animal was, uh, taken as carrion, you know, scavenged, because they, they certainly will eat dead, dead deer too. Uh, they can take those.
Okay, if somebody has a, a problem with coy- in my neighborhood, we have coyotes. I've seen them in my backyard, I've seen them running down the road. About two Sundays ago, I get a phone call from a neighbor that's riding by, said there's one laying in the driveway of my neighbor's house, and it looked like it'd been hit or something. So I called Animal Control. Well, Animal Control for Currituck only deals with domesticated animals. So, they told me to call Wildlife Resources Officer, which, in all likelihood, you guys are gonna be somewhere that you're not gonna be able to get to whatever the animal is or whatever, so I took it upon myself to go out and see what I could do.
Right.
And, of course, he was gone when I got where they said he was, but one of my other neighbors killed that coyote, uh, about a week or so later, and if, if I understand right, they thought it may have had rabies. So, I don't know if there's any, uh, uh, information about them having rabies or, but they are here.
Yes, sir.
And, and they're all over the place. What about, like, wild turkeys? We just got a wild turkey population established in Currituck again. Will they? I know we had pheasants on where I live, and they wiped out the pheasants. There's, I don't know if the bobcats, the, the foxes, coyotes, something has wiped out every game bird, and, and I'm just wondering if they're gonna start wiping out the turkey population that was just reestablished in the last few years. They will eat the turkeys.
Right, I, you know, I think one of the, one of the things that, that we started to see is, uh, coyotes tend to prey on some of the, the, what we call meso predators, the smaller predators, like possums and raccoons, uh, certainly red foxes, some of those things that actually are nest predators. And I, I think in, in the end, the, the ability to take adult wild turkeys, uh, is, we, we really don't know what impact they might have. I know some of the places out west that have historically had coyotes, uh, you actually have some of the higher turkey densities in some of those places, because they all kinda, over time, they've kinda gotten balanced out. Uh, you know, I, it, it's really hard to say what the long-term, uh, take is on coyotes. I think there's a lot of questions there. Uh, but certainly, I, I think as far as turkeys go, I think there's, there's some kind of balance that starts to be achieved, uh, where basically when, uh, coyotes start to impact, some of the predators that actually destroy nests, you know, in some ways it, it may kinda balance the other way. You know, it just all kinda depends, but I, that's certainly a concern. The main concern I hear now, uh, is a lot of questions about our deer herd, and I, I think some of the research that's going on now, uh, in particularly in South Carolina is doing, doing some, uh, is, is starting to look at, at how, how we can basically manage our deer in the face of, uh, a, a new form of mortality, which is basically what it is.
You raise some interesting points, you know, listening to it with the presentation too, talking about the, um, the numbers that would have to be harvested in order to maintain a consistent population. However, though, you also stated that they have a specific area that they will claim as being territorial, which I presume if the density gets too high, they will just disperse further if there's place for them to go. Usually with populations, what happens is that's, that's an independent control of the population, because they just won't continue to grow in population if they don't have the room to rein.
There are no predators for coyotes other than us.
Right, I, I would say that, that us and vehicles, uh, are the, are the key predators at this time. Uh, disease start, certainly starts to be an issue for coyotes. Uh, initially, when we first started to see coyotes, I think there was some, some question about what effect the heartworms will have on another canid, uh, because certainly heartworms and dogs in the south, uh, they, they don't mix very well. Uh, you know, we've kinda overcome that, you know, through, uh, medicine, but, uh, I think one of the things that, that has been a question is, you know, how well are they actually, how well are coyotes actually doing in the face of some things that they did not have to deal with, uh, when they were in another place? So it's, uh, it, I think the, the jury's kinda out on, on long-term. I think it's safe to say we will continue to have coyotes, uh, but as far as densities and things like that go, I, you're exactly right. I, they, they, basically, there's, there's a, there's an immigration and movement that, uh, has allowed this expansion, but at the same time, it, it basically keeps density, uh, typically, I think we're looking at somewhere between two and six coyotes per square mile is what has, uh, been documented in some other places.
Well, there's a, there's a scientific principle, the, the, the Fox-Rabbit Syndrome, where as rabbits evolve to get faster and faster, the foxes also get faster and faster. It's a continuing battle going for that, and it appears that a lot of the efforts that we're putting into harvesting coyotes is we're killing the dumb ones, and we're just evolving a smarter and smarter breed of coyote. You know, the reason the black bears are so successful is because they've learned to coexist with us, and the smarter the coyotes get, they will do that too. So by shooting all the dumb ones, I'm not sure we're really helping the situation. It may be that we're spending a lot of time and effort doing nothing more than helping them improve the species. And make them even more adaptable to what we're doing, and I'm afraid we get to the point where they may decide, hey, more of us can coexist per square mile than have been, because that's gonna be a necessary adaptation to it, so.
Yeah, it's hard to say what the future holds. Uh, certainly at this point, our agency has sought to put the tools out there that we can deal with the population the best we can, uh, with, through a very liberal hunting season at this point. Uh, some counties do not have much trapping at all, uh, simply because they, they have chosen to, to restrict trapping seasons. Uh, that's typically when coyotes are trapped, is during the, uh, basically the uniform state season. Uh, you know, I, I think we're still exploring some of these tools, but I, you're, you're exactly right. What, what the future holds, you know, I, I think we always have to ask ourselves, what if we did nothing and did not continue to develop these tools, uh, for, for application to the population, you know, the, the landscape, uh, and for individual situations that people have to deal, individuals have to deal with.
Well, problem animal's obviously gonna have to be removed from contact with people, but, you know, the population generally out there, if they're not affecting anything, that may be the best solution to it. The only solution I think it probably would make a difference to it is if you can come up with some really good recipes.
Yes, sir.
Some, some Road Runners and Acme Safe falling out of the sky.
There's, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, lot of discussion, uh, as far as, you know, where, where things are headed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Turner and the coyotes? I'd like to thank him for coming.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the invitation, and I, I would certainly, uh, ask if, if you would, if you would read that study. I think it's, uh, kinda gets into some more detail than I could get into tonight, and I'm more, more than willing to sit down and discuss with you, uh, individual issues to help you find solutions that, uh, that will work for people.
And to Mr. Scanlon, if you would, so direct, I'd really like to see the dissemination of the availability of this information on some of the county resources, so if somebody goes to the county website, they would know the information's available and, and be able to at least look this up and educate themselves about, uh, what, what is available as a resource.
And feel free to put people in contact with me as well.
All right.
I'll be glad to discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds good. Okay, next, uh, next item administrative reports, Ms. Cameron Lowe, the Extension Director, is gonna do a presentation on the Currituck County Rural Center. How many miles you run this morning, Cameron?
Just three. Actually, I didn't run any miles this morning, just.
I get tired driving three miles a morning, yeah.
Well, good. Um, as you said, my purpose here this evening is to just provide a very brief update on the progress down at the Currituck County Rural Center, and certainly, as you all know, it is at 184 Milburn Sawyer Road, which is just off North Spot Road down in Powell's Point. Uh, you may also know that the administration of the Rural Center falls under the Cooperative Extension Department, and specifically, we've organized that under our 4-H program. Um, I do wanna put my presentation in context just a little bit for you, so I'm gonna share with you just a bit of the history, and I'll keep it real brief. Um, but you know, back in 2006, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners produ- or purchased a, uh, then-working horse farm that was located down in Spot. Um, the purpose of this acquisition was to provide recreational and tourism space for our equine industry here, here in Currituck County, which is pretty vibrant. Subsequent studies, uh, after that purchase concluded that the property and the programming that could take place on that property could serve as a catalyst for several priorities that were identified, and some of those included supporting the equine industry, um, and equine tourism, of course, creating an, an additional recreational and educational, um, resource for our community, and supporting Currituck's rural character and preservation of farms. So the operational plan that was put together began to focus on these priorities, and an overall purpose for the center was developed. Ben, if you'll hit the next one for me? And you can see that purpose here. Uh, the Currituck County Rural Center is maintained for educational, cultural, and recreational enrichment of the public, and for the benefit of citizens and visitors to Currituck County. So I wanted to put that in context, just to show you, uh, the reason why we've developed in the way that we have. Um, so currently, our improvements have focused mostly on the recreational and the educational priorities, as well as completing out those equine-related features. Our upcoming efforts, of course, will look more toward the cultural heritage, uh, aspect of those priorities, and I'll go through that with you in just a bit more detail. Okay, Ben? In the first phase of development, which was completed in the 2010-11 budget year, we did a lot of things. Um, first, the demolition of some of the existing structures that were no longer usable. We upgraded the roadways, uh, electrical and water improvements, we installed some outdoor riding rings, uh, upgraded the barns and some of the turnout sheds, and we completed the addition of the office, which you see here, and some ADA-compliant restrooms. And of course, you've seen most of those improvements. So Phase 1 focused quite a bit on finishing out the original purpose for which the property was acquired, those improvements to service that equine community. Uh, the most recent phase, which was completed just a few months ago, really focused on enhancing the environmental education and the recreational opportunities, and that's where I'd like to focus the bulk of our time this evening. Um, before I do that, I do want to acknowledge the contributions of Mike Doxy, whoever saw this project, and did an excellent job making sure everything was done as specified, and of course, Tracy Hale, who's our facility manager on site, and, and was there day-to-day overseeing that, that project. Um, so the map that you see here is just an overview of the project. I certainly don't expect you to pick up on everything that was done based on this visual, but I just wanted you to see that in general, most of the added amenities and improvements were focused toward the eastern side of the property. So if you go to the next one, I'll take you in detail through what, what's been added. Uh, here you see one of the 20-by-25 picnic shelters that we put on the property, and this was really something that the facility was missing. We lacked shaded structures for, um, gathering and passive recreation, so it's very nice that we have these two, um, picnic pavilions on the property. This one's located just north of the canal, there's an identical structure located just south of the canal over near the existing barn, um, and you can see that there are walkways to and from, completely ADA-compliant and totally accessible. Uh, next, Jason Weeks, our Parks and Rec Director, who knows a whole lot more about playgrounds than I do, um, planned this structure out and, and worked to acquire that and have that installed, um, and that's a real asset down there. In any recreational study that I've ever seen, uh, that Currituck has done, in any of the needs assessments that Cooperative Extension has done, um, the addition of additional play structures for, uh, young children always surfaces, so it's very nice that we were able to, to accommodate that request there too. Uh, let's see. Now, this is probably my favorite, and our most unique addition, uh, to the property, and this is an ADA-compliant floating canoe and kayak launch, and as far as I know, this is the only amenity of this kind for public use on the mainland side of the county. Um, this opens up an additional water access to folks that want to access the Sound with self-propelled, propelled vessels. We've got plenty of, of, uh, water access for motorized vehicles, uh, but very few for some of these self-propelled public accesses, and, and so that's very exciting. Next one. Uh, the next thing we added was a very large rain garden, and this was actually installed at the Water Quality Day, which was held down at the Rural Center back in April. It was installed largely with, uh, volunteer labor, many of your county department staff, um, volunteers from other organizations. You can see, uh, Mike there shoveling in some mulch there in the front. Uh, Tim Kirkpatrick, our Rural Center Director, who's here with me tonight, is in there. Uh, that's Holly White of the Planning Department, your own Mr. Ben Woody was there that day as well, um, moving dirt and installing plants. So this is a, a, a working rain garden, but it's also an excellent demonstration on the site, and we've got in some interpretive signage that will be forthcoming to be placed there with that, so very excited about that. We also added, uh, it's not quite 2,700 feet, but it's close to 2,700 feet of boardwalk, and this actually goes through the swamp forest on the property and on into the marshland, which opens up a previously unused portion of the park. Um, so really excited about that. We've got some interpretive signage that should've been delivered today. Yep, should've been delivered today, that'll be installed throughout the boardwalk, boardwalk that highlights, uh, the native plants, uh, native wildlife and other features that you'll see throughout, throughout our community. Um, so that's a very good educational resource. We can accommodate tour groups, um, elementary school, uh, student field trips, and, and a host of other things, Boy Scouts, 4-H clubs, all kinds of things. Uh, located at the end of the boardwalk is the newly renovated pier. That is actually an existing structure that was there that we renovated, um, and we've transformed that into a fishing pier and picnic, uh, pad. And that, that spot has some great views of the Currituck Sound, which is just beyond the marsh, the marsh itself, Hog Quarter Creek out there, uh, really neat place, and again, the whole thing ADA-compliant and fully accessible, so very, very exciting. Finally, uh, what you see here is a map of some kayak trails that we established out there. Again, another very unique amenity. Um, a larger version of this map is to be installed at the head of the canal where the launch is, um, and we've actually had some people kayak up from the Sound and tell us how nice it was to have these marked trails out there, so that's, that's pretty exciting. So that's the overview of what's been completed to date at the Rural Center. So again, in our site improvement so far, we've addressed recreation and educational purposes, but we've not yet, yet addressed that cultural side. And in the original conceptual documents, there were plans to construct a representation of a 1930's-era Currituck farmstead on the property. Currituck County Farm Bureau has pledged $50,000 over 10 years in support of that project, three of those payments which have already been received. Um, so that's where we are today. We're looking toward developing that cultural heritage portion of the vision for the Rural Center, um, and we're doing that largely through partnerships. So to date, uh, as you know, the county has purchased the lot just to the west of the indoor riding ring, um, and that is the proposed location of the Cultural Heritage Exhibit, so it'll be one of the first things you see as you drive onto the property. Uh, as a first step, we've leveraged the Cooperative Extension connection to North Carolina State University and the College of Design, and we've been working with the Community Design Initiative, um, to develop a more complete master site plan, and that work is currently in progress. But as far as the next visible phase of development, um, what you'll see, plans are currently moving forward to construct that 1930's-era Currituck barn on that newly-acquired lot. The structure will be a working demonstration of farm life in the 30's, as well as interpret the unique relationship of the land, the Sound, um, to natives of Currituck during that time period. The structure will also serve as the mainland exhibit for the Historic Boat Program, so we're working closely with the Whalehead Club as well to more closely link those two centers. Next. So that covers physically what's been happening at the Rural Center, but equally as important as the physical improvements have been the, the programming and the events that have been going on down there. And so I have with me tonight, uh, Mr. Tim Kirkpatrick, who many of you have met. He's our Rural Center Director. He has responsibility for educational programming, um, and event maintenance down there at the Rural Center, and he's gonna tell you a little bit about what has been going on with the events and programming at the facility. Okay?
Thanks. Thanks, Cameron.
My name's Tim Kirkpatrick, like she said, and I'm the Currituck County Rural Center Director, and tonight, I get to talk to you about the Rural Center, and, uh, tonight we're trying to put together kinda the, I'm gonna talk about the programming. programming part of it, but I'm going to kind of put together the past meets the present to create the future. And we have a lot going on down there. And in the past, we didn't, we just had like a fishing day, horse shows, a horse clinic, and day camps. Now, we've taken those, we haven't done away with those, but we just grew those. And then we've added some other things, talking to the community and different things. And so we've added, we've gone up in our daily attendance, and that's people coming out daily for the month, we've gone up 100% from when we started. And then we've also, with attendance of people at the events, we've gone up over 75%. And then with us hosting events, we've gone up 100%. So with those, we not only have what we had in the past, we're growing. We've got, we've got multiple horse shows, we've got dog show, we've got the Rural Farm Festival. And then we have day camps, clinics, school events, special equestrians, Special Olympics training, and you can go to the next slide, I think some of those are on there. And then fishing events, and then we have kayaking clinics, leadership training, and horsemanship camps. And you can see on the slides some of those that we have, that we have been going on. And down there, now, we've taken what we have here in the present, and what we want to do is just multiply that. We want that to expand. And so for the future, we not only want to do those, but we also want to add maybe like a rodeo, we want to do maybe like a car show, boat show, kind of do things. We've been talking to the community, trying to get feedback of what they want to do. And we want to work more closely with the schools so that we can do more educational. Like Cameron showed you, we got a lot of new educational things down there that we can really do, that we can really help out with. And the future is just exploding, and we're saddled up and we're ready to ride, we're ready to go. So we're really excited about that. And then the next slide is October 6th, we're having the Currituck Rural Farm Festival, sorry. And we're excited about that. We've got vendors coming in, we're going to have pony rides, things for the kids. And then we have different vendors coming out, we got different exhibits coming out, and different things like that. It's going to be a fun time for the whole family, and we want to invite you guys. And we want everybody to just come out for that. We're really excited about it, and we want people just to use the Rural Center.
Any questions you might have, we'd sure be happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
All right.
As one of the three commissioners that bought that property, there's three sitting here, it's becoming exactly what we envisioned it to become.
Excellent.
And I've told people it would be the Whalehead Club of the mainland in terms of attracting people and becoming a destination point. I'm so proud of everything that's taking place out there and what will take place. No other county east of Martin County has a facility like this, and it's something that the people of Currituck County, if they've not been there, they should go down there. And they will be proud to see the efforts that you and your staff and the many others that have worked there are doing to make that a showplace. And thank you for all that y'all do.
Thank you.
And I understand Commissioner Etheridge was actually going to participate in the 1930s working farm there since he was there and familiar with the process.
He's our advisor for that.
Stand-up paddle boarding. You do kayaks, well, paddle boarding is, that's great, that'd be a perfect facility for it.
You could certainly launch out.
Okay.
Are you volunteering as an instructor?
I could.
I can say this, Mr. Chairman, that's the perfect place to put it in.
Yeah.
It really is. And folks, the pictures that you see here do not do this place. You know, well, you've really got to drive down there and see it, and it's one of those whows, just like the YMCA when you walk into it. It is a real wow, and you need to stop by and visit. It's well worth it.
I concur with Commissioner Martin, and also with the signs on 168. I'm sure it's helped with the finding the Rural Center, too. That's been a big, that's been a big thing that I've gotten phone calls on is, oh, we can finally find it now, there's a sign on the street, so.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one comment. I'd like to compliment Cameron and her staff, also with the staff of the Whalehead Club and Diane Nordstrom. I know now with our Director of Tourism, I was in a Whalehead meeting the other day, and Whalehead numbers are up. We have a team effort in Currituck County. Whalehead Club, the Rural Center, the Extension Center, and Tourism are now working as a bond. So I think it's fantastic, and the numbers that we're seeing, it's just, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cameron.
All right, thank you.
All right. Item B on the agenda, administrative reports, is also Cameron Low, Extension Director, recognizing the Board of Commissioners for their outstanding partnership with Cooperative Extension. And I thought we were just having a good time.
Take two, here we go. Now, tonight, it is my pleasure to publicly present to the Currituck Board of Commissioners and our County Manager the Extension County Partnership Award. Currituck County was one of five counties selected statewide to receive this award, and the purpose was to recognize local governments for their outstanding partnership with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service. The criteria for selection was based on commitment of resources, inclusiveness in county government, and advocacy and/or involvement in extension programs. The award, of course, was officially accepted in August at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference by Commissioner Etheridge. So I'm just here to officially present it to our public here publicly. So thanks to Extension's tremendous relationship with county government and the support that each of you provide, both individually and corporately, the application was quite easy for me to prepare. Our local Extension Center is so appreciative of the commitment you've demonstrated to us over the years, and we're pleased to partner with you in making Currituck a better place to live, work, and learn. So if you'll come forward, I'd like to present the county plaque commemorating this award, as well as each of you an individual plaque in recognition of your contributions. And again, thank you for all you do to make our partnership successful and a model across the state of North Carolina.
We're going to be on Facebook.
Oh, sure.
I want the big one.
You want the big one? There you go, Ms. Mary.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you.
Mr. Arthur.
Thank you.
You don't get one. Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you.
Mr. Rohr.
Thank you.
Mr. Petry. And of course, we wish Vance well, and we do have an award for him also. And Mr. Scanlon, we've got one for you as well.
Come get the picture.
Come get the picture.
Come get the picture. And then there's the, there's the large, I'll present that to you.
Very good. What, you just tried to get in front of your purpose or what? I see you, hey, isn't it? If you want to join the picture.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Cameron.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say something since I was in Raleigh when the award was given. This was the first time this award was ever handed out. So once again, Currituck exhibited leadership on a statewide level. And I got to tell you, of course, I'm biased, but as they read out the various criteria on which the various five counties were judged and awarded this, nobody touched what our commitment as a citizenry is to the people of Currituck County through Extension. And you know, it's people like Cameron and her staff that make it so easy. I've told people if we could get the bang for the buck out of everybody, we'd get out of Extension, we'd all be a lot better off. And I was very proud to accept and humbled to accept the award on behalf of Currituck County. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you again. Item C, update on Department of Planning and Community Development. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several meetings ago, I was asked by the Board to provide an update of some of the things we've been doing as a result of the creation of the Planning and Community Development Department. So I wanted to do that real briefly tonight. Real quickly, the Planning and Inspections Department have been separate for many years, and recently, late 2011, we merged those departments into the new Planning and Community Development Department. Within that department, we have four divisions that exist: Administration, Central Permitting, Planning and Inspections. So we're still providing a lot of the services that the citizens are accustomed to, but we've kind of consolidated our efforts. And some of our goals, our primary goals of the merger was to improve service delivery, expedite approval processes, and be more customer-driven. And really, our first priority coming out of this merger was to improve residential permitting. That's where we focused our efforts for the past six months, and I want to go over some of the things we've done, the staff's done, actually, in the past six months. Probably the biggest thing, and I'm not even sure how much this is out there yet, but what we've done is we've taken our residential permitting process, and we've created three types of permits that you can get, three ways you can get a permit in Currituck County. First is you can get what's called a no-review permit. That's the idea, that you can walk into the building inspections office, hand us an application, and we will hand you a permit, and you walk out. We want to increase the number of permits that we can do that for. Historically, it's been mechanical permits, changeouts, alterations. We're trying to add things like decks, hot tubs, swimming pools, even some accessory structures, making those where you can get in and get out with the permit. Another thing we've done, which I'm really pleased with, and this really was the staff's idea, and they've worked very hard to make this successful, is we have something called express permitting. Express permitting is only available in the mainland, that's where we have the resources to do it. But any day, Monday through Friday, you can walk in our office between 8:00 and 11:30 a.m., you can apply for a permit, an entire new construction, single-family dwelling, and you'll get issued the permit as you're there on the spot. We've got it where it takes us about 30 minutes to do the review, so you can walk in with two or three permits for houses and walk out 30 minutes later, or two or three applications and walk out 30 minutes later with two or three building permits. That's an option we're offering. What we've seen right now is about 20% of our permits are express permitting. I think that'll eventually be more, once folks realize it's an option and you can do that. The other thing we focused on is our traditional permits. That's the old idea, where you bring in the application, you drop it off, you come back and get it a week later. We know we need to be faster and more efficient, the staff wants to be more efficient, we've made that a priority. And real quickly, we took a, we took about a five-week, five-to-six-week period in 2011 and reviewed the types of permits we do and how long it takes us to issue those permits. We took the same five-or-six-week period in 2012 and did a comparison. Fortunately, the total number of permits was pretty similar, so I think the comparison's valid. But what you'll basically see is, and I'll go through this quick, on the mainland, you've got more, no-review permits are being issued because we're trying to expand that and make that easier. You've got the express review, but just the traditional permits, that's when you drop them off and come back and get them, during that particular time, the difference in days, days you had to wait to receive the permit was 6.4 days in 2011, issuing the permits in 2.3 days in 2012. That'll fluctuate some, but historically, it's taken us, we always say three to five business days, but it's taken us four or five business days to turn around permits, sometimes more. But we're getting that down to under three business days for traditional permits, which is good. Same thing on the Outer Banks, we don't have the express permitting there, but some folks from the Outer Banks do come to the mainland to get the express permit. But we've been able to take permits there, traditional permits, and get those from six days down to 3.3 days during our trial period. So you can see, we're trying to make some efforts to focus on permitting and getting people in and out the door, and doing it in the customer-friendly manner. And I think some of the results and the numbers show that. We're going to continue to track permits like this to make sure that we're issuing permits in a timely manner. And one thing I do want to note is, I think there's a lot of positive feedback from the contractors and builders that use this, but I want the Board to know, too, that I think the staff that's down there, they want to be efficient and successful, and they've really bought into this, and they're the ones that are doing, I don't review the permits, the staff does, so they're making this work. Some of the things we want to do, we're not done yet, though, but some of the things we want to keep doing in the future is try to use technology to our advantage a little more, because the one thing is, we're getting permits out faster now, the economy's a little slow now, but we have to make sure that when the economy picks up again, we continue to get permits out at a fast rate and not necessarily need more staff to do that. The best way to do that is get good at issuing permits, and then find ways, such as technology improvements and other methods, to be able to maintain that rate of issuing permits. And so we know that's important. Some of the things that we want to do going into next year, some things you'll hopefully see in 2013, and a lot of these ideas come from either customers that we work with or our staff, but it's to start to accept credit card payments. Probably the biggest complaint I get is when you have to get a reinspection, you've got to get in your car from Point Harbor, drive all the way to the courthouse to buy a check for $50, and drive all the way back down to Point Harbor. You spend more gas getting here than you do the inspection fee. So we want to get credit card payments.
Why can't our inspector accept a check for $50 to keep somebody from having to drive all the way up here?
And they could do, and they could do that, too. That would work just as well. Either way's fine. But we want, not only the reinspection fees, but we want to get, we want to get the payments. We want to take the credit card when you walk in the door from the get-go. So we do want to make that easier, but they could do that as well. And we try to, we try to do that as best we can. Phone system upgrades, we're working on that. We want to get better phone connections with the Corolla office so we can communicate better and make sure that we're working well with Corolla. We bridge the sound through our technology, so improving the phones will help with that. That's in the works. Munis is the software we use to issue permits. We're looking for improvements to Munis. The goal of that being that eventually, we can actually accept and issue permits online, which would really be ideal, and also schedule inspections online. And I think those both will, one, reduce the number of phone calls that come into the county, and, two, just be another option that customers or builders or contractors can use to procure services from the county. Some of the external things that we're doing, and you'll see these next month, is we've been working on simplifying applications, we're trying to get our application packages more concise, a little more to the point, easier for folks to use. So we're really trying to get the applications down to where they're more user-friendly. One thing we're doing is we're integrating ARHS into our process. One thing I don't think citizens realize a lot of times is that before you can get a building permit, you have to have a Septic Improvements Permit from ARHS, which is Albemarle Regional Health Services. So a challenge we have is, if it takes you three or four days to get a permit from the Health Department, then you come into Currituck County, and it takes you three or four days, all of a sudden, it's a two-week permitting process. And we're working with the Health Department to try to overcome that, be more efficient together, and minimize a person's exposure to waiting for a permit. We're continuing to do outreach and training efforts. We're trying to get some customer surveys and input mechanisms online, be a little more updated with that. We're going to start going out and having training sessions for contractors, builders, and developers. You know, if there's a change to the state building code, if the UDO changes, every, you know, so often, three or four months, have a training session where we can communicate with our users to make sure they understand what we're doing and how we can improve. And finally, one thing I'm excited about, and I'm working with the County Manager on this, is maybe doing some slight upgrades to our office space. If you've been down there to get a permit, it's not necessarily the most inviting place, it's kind of dark. We want to create some office space, a customer area where folks can come, sit in, have a better experience, set up our desk, and our approach to customer service being a priority, make sure that people come in, it's a, you know, professional-looking atmosphere. We have a professional staff, we just got to get the facilities to match that, and make sure we get people in, and get them out, and keep them happy. And I think that the staff's really working hard to do that, and I'm pleased with what they've done in the past year. So be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Mr. Woody?
I just have a comment that I am thrilled to see that we're moving in this direction, that our departments are talking to each other and working together, and you're expediting the experience of, typically, a person comes to the courthouse, they're not coming to visit, they're coming because they have a problem and they need some help. And if they get out of here with their permit and it takes less time, typically, they're going to feel a lot better about the experience. So I commend you, and if there's resources and stuff that you need, then I'm sure the County Manager is going to make sure that you receive them to make this project work. It's important.
Thank you. He's been very supportive, and the staff's really committed to doing this, so.
We have an agreement. Results gets technology, not the other way around.
Ah, there you go.
Is that something like a yardstick of a good job?
Yep.
I noticed the calls from contractors have dropped off significantly.
They have.
Very good. Okay, so no further discussion on that item. We'll move on to the update on the Moyoc Small Area Plan. It's also, Mr. Woody?
All right. Holly White was scheduled to be here tonight, but something came up with, she had a family issue she had to deal with, so I'm going to fill in for Holly. I'll try my best. You guys know Holly well. She'll be the lead planner for the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Moyoc Small Area, Moyoc, the Small Area Plan is going to be this county's third small area plan. We've done one small area plan for the Maple Barco area, which we've really implemented a lot of that. That was a successful plan. We did one in Corolla for Corolla Village, which we're still working on that, trying to get that going. So Moyoc's the next one up. And basically, what a small area plan is, is the Board knows what a land use plan is. That's our kind of big-picture plan. It's done at 30,000 feet. It's got general policies that apply countywide. A small area plan is the county's opportunity to work with citizens in a small geographic area to figure out what it is that they really need or desire, or what are the strengths of that area, the weaknesses, opportunities, threats. It helps us figure out, well, what does Moyoc want? What does it need? What can we do to service Moyoc better? That's what a small area plan is. Small area plans are not regulatory. They're planning documents, they're policy documents, so it's not a regulatory document. It just lets us get a better handle on the types of issues and challenges that a certain area has, in this case Moyoc. One thing I'll note about Moyoc, well, I think it's a great area for a small area plan, and I think the Board was wise to direct staff to move forward, is since 1990, Moyoc has had 122% increase in population. That is by far the largest population increase in Currituck County. And of course, when you have that kind of population increase, you have demand, increased demand for housing, for county services, more traffic, more stormwater runoff, loss of open space. You have that kind of population increase, you're going to have changes in the community, you're going to have challenges with growth. And there's a lot going on in Moyoc. There's a lot of infrastructure the county's installing up there. There's a lot of things we need to really look into and pay attention to. And a small area planning, small area planning process is perfect for this because what it does, it allows the Board of Commissioners to work with the community, try to resolve or figure out some solutions for some of these challenges. You've got transportation issues up there. That's not just cars, that's pedestrians as well. That's created a problem up there recently. You've got demand for public parks, water and sewer infrastructure that's available and being installed, development pressures, appearance issues. There's a lot of challenges that exist in Moyoc. So what we've done to get this thing started is county is holding a kickoff meeting, September 24th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Moyoc Library. So that's a Monday, next Monday, actually, at 7:00 p.m. We'll be at the library. This first meeting is just a kickoff meeting, so we're not going to, we're not going to figure it all out Monday night. But we want, what we want to do is get the community there, inform them what a small area plan is, why it's important, and why they should be involved, just kind of give an overview. We want, we think staff feels like, and I think the Commissioners agree, this is a great planning effort that really needs to have a lot of ground-based citizen participation. So this is a great chance for us to get our citizens in Moyoc involved. We would ask them to come out next Monday, join us for the meeting. We'll try to go through what a plan is and what it means. Another thing is, is we think that this would be a great effort to have some sort of stakeholder committee or a group of dedicated citizens that represent diverse interests, that may want to, you know, really get involved in this and see it through to the end. We want, we would like to try to form a steering committee. And we want to have a number of public meetings over the next probably six to nine months to get this thing done and bring something back to the Board of Commissioners that represents a direction or a vision for the Moyoc area. Kind of gives the Board and the citizens and the staff a work plan for how to move forward. And so I would ask anybody that's interested to come out next Monday and join us. And you can go to our website. We've got a lot of information on the website, frequently asked questions, maps, other things about Moyoc, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Woody?
Comment, if you would, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Woody, would it be possible for you to enlist the help of the middle school and elementary school at Moyoc and just through sending home a flyer notifying the parents of this meeting? Because we do have a real problem in communicating with our citizens sometime. And I don't know if you've thought about doing it or not, but that would be a real quick way because I know there's a lot of active and interested people in the area, and this would be a way of reaching out and notifying them.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
We can look into that tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right, good.
Just comment, Mr. Woody. I'm up there every day and talk to a lot of people. And I think there is some genuine interest in going forward with this. And I hear a lot of, they would really like to see some type of recreational, passive recreational facilities up there, parks or something. So I think you're going to get some good participation out of it from the folks that I've talked to.
Good.
And I've talked to a lot.
There's a number of issues that Ben and I have discussed, but recreation is one of them. Retail, I mean, just kind of echoing what he's got on the agenda to discuss with the citizens. And, you know, I thank Holly and yourself, Mr. Woody, for getting this going. And I'm sure the people of Moyoc are just biting at the bit to get in there and start giving you all kinds of great ideas. There's a lot of diversity.
Any other comments? All right, that concludes the Administrative Report's New Business Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's Commissioners Report. We'll start with Mr. Petry tonight.
We miss you. Vance get well. Vance Oliver's doing better. Hopefully, he'll be back with us in about a month. So, we miss you. Need you back.
Ms. Gilbert?
Just a couple of things. Wednesday night at the new Moyoc United Methodist Church, Pastor Bill has had another music and message to raise money for the Moyoc Food Bank. The only admission to that is cans, cash, or coins. They have, you know, some great entertainment, so I encourage you to come out Wednesday night at 7:00 to benefit the Moyoc Food Bank. The food bank is open for the remainder of September, on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 2:00 until 4:00. This only services the 2-7-9-5-8 ZIP code. Beginning in October, though, the food bank will only be open on Tuesdays from 2:00 until 6:00 p.m. So that will be a change next month. Secondly, the Moyoc Women's Club is back in meeting mode and memberships. So if you're interested in getting active with the Moyoc Women's Group, you can see me. Lastly, Currituck Kids is accepting memberships now, so if you're interested in participating with the Currituck Kids program, you can go to their website, which is www-currituckkids.com. And again, another great community involvement group that I would encourage you, if you want to get active in the community, something to be active with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin? Nothing. Ms. Etheridge?
Couple of quick things. Last week over in Hurtford, there was a tragedy involving a 10-month-old child at the mouth of a pit bull mix. And I've had people ask me, does the county have any type of ordinance against pit bulls? And I said, not to my knowledge. But what that raises is, you know, regardless of what type of animal it is, what type breed of dog, you need to keep your eye on your small children around, any type of dog. You never know when they might turn and do something as horrible as that was. And the last thing is, I think this is the only meeting I've ever been to where the county attorney didn't have anything to say. Mr. McCree, good evening, sir. How you doing?
We must be behaving then. Mr. O'Neil?
That means he's pro bono tonight.
Yeah.
I just want to point out the fact that today is the 225th anniversary of the Constitution of the United States of America. It is the most important governing document that has ever been written. It was written by some very smart men and should be required reading and study of every school child, college student, and adult. And I brought a copy for all my fellow Commissioners.
Particularly Commissioners.
And especially elected officials. And the other thing I would like to say is, I've been in conversation with a couple of people about some ideas about signage, special event signage, like having community billboards, not a billboard, but like a community sign, like somewhere in Shawboro, you could have a way, a way where people could post whatever the nonprofit events are going on. You could have one in Moyoc, you could have one in different areas, and it could be a way of cutting down on a lot of the excessive signage, the temporary signs that are all over the place. But if you had a community billboard and you lived in a certain area, you'd know every week you needed to go if you wanted to know what was going on. It would be a, I think you even discussed this.
We did in the meeting.
In that meeting, it would be a way of, people would know what was going on, and the nonprofits could put their information up there, or community events, and you could have them in different areas of the county. And you could, that could be a way of eliminating a whole lot of excess signage that seems to appear all over the place. So, I don't know if that's something that staff would like to investigate or not.
So, if I may, several years ago, we put those bulletin boards at the convenience centers, which are in each one of our major communities. I don't know that that's actually being utilized to the extent that it could be.
It's a great idea, right there at convenience centers.
And make use of those and put a sign over it, say, "Community Information" on those because they were encased in glass, I think, or you could open it up.
Yeah, but you need to have a outside defense when you're driving in, a nice big community billboard at each one of those. That's a wonderful place to put them. And then when the animal lovers Assistance League is having something, they could post it there. When the Chambers have an event, they could post it. And it's just a way of, everybody goes to the trash dump. Well, most everybody. So, anyways, just a thought. Thank you, sir.
Stopped on my way here tonight, as a matter of fact. I would have known what was going on if I hadn't.
There you go.
Having something to look at. All right. I just have a couple of things, too. Ms. Gilbert, talking about Currituck Kids, and for those of you that are not familiar with this organization, you really should become involved with it. They have just this year reached the point now where they've established an endowed fund, meaning that it will go on in perpetuity, as opposed to scrambling to raise funds every time we need to do something. Fundraisers that they put on are always fun events. Every bit of the proceeds that comes in goes right back into Currituck County. School-aged kids needs to help them survive the educational experience with the dignity and respect that makes it possible for them to go on and appreciate higher education and to do well. So, really is a worthy cause. One other thing, too, that for the first time, and I hate to say this because I should get out more often, but the demands of different things sometimes prevent it, but I got to go over it because the Chamber had a business after hours at the Whalehead Club last Wednesday in conjunction with one of their wine tastings, which they do every Wednesday night from 3:00 to 7:00, and will continue doing that through October. And that's a wonderful event. They have music. You get a discounted pass to the Whalehead Club itself to go in and tour the house. Many of the local wine vineyards, wineries are participating in that. And it's just really a fun thing to do. It's a great way to spend an afternoon. They start at 3:00. You don't have to stay there for the whole four hours, but the sunsets over the sound from the Whalehead Club are just magnificent. I don't know why more people don't go and take advantage of that. So, this Wednesday, we'll be all out there doing it, so hopefully we'll see some of you out there. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything tonight?
Yes, sir. I'd like to remind the Board that you have a joint meeting with the Whalehead Trust Wednesday, here at this facility, right in this room, starting at 8:00. Presentation starts at 8:30. It's a follow-up for Judy Randall's coming back to do an addendum to the study that she did some five years ago. And the Magellan Group, who was doing a study for the Whalehead Trust, is doing the presentation. We also learned this afternoon that the meeting we thought we were going to a couple of weeks ago for, in support of the McCurrituck Bridge, that meeting has now been rescheduled for October 5th. It is a Friday. That meeting is in Raleigh. There was a rumor at one time it would be in Asheville, but it is going to be in Raleigh. So, you need to mark that on your calendar.
Same, probably. We'll be leaving at 4:00 in the morning and going?
Yes.
Do we need to give Ms. Keane our breakfast order for the Wednesday meeting while we're here tonight? Sausage and egg biscuit or, no? Okay.
Nabs.
That's all I need.
Be nabbed in there if you want something.
Be nabbed, yeah.
No machine.
Oh, well.
A bowl of cereal.
I'd like a dash of Saigon cinnamon in my coffee, if you'll get that. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. Do we have any other?
Move for adjournment.
Saigon.
Second.
Any discussion about adjourning? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming.